I'd like to call this meeting of council for Monday, March 12th. My apologies, not very good.
You're in charge of the halftime show now?
What?
You're in charge of the entertainment.
Sweet. I am gonna sing something from Mariah.
Oh, no. Scream is not shit.
Yeah, she's irritating. I can sing from the greatest singer female ever, next to Susie Quatro. Um, Patsy Cline?
Oh, yes.
Oh, really? Anybody that wastes meat?
Yes.
All right, first item is to adopt the agenda. Um, before we adopt the agenda, I have a late item to bring forward. In the fact that I'm bringing back to the table a resolution of council that approved the 2018 project budget for $65,000 of the SolarNow project and direct staff to include the project budget for the 2018/2022 financial plan bylaw. That resolution was failed, so I'm bringing it back to the table. The council's approved.
For reconsideration?
For reconsideration, exactly.
Do you need a resolution for that?
I need a move. Second.
Want to make that motion?
Counselor Croft. All those in favor?
Counselor Ross?
Yeah.
Assuming she would be. Anyone opposed? So now may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented.
Did you get a motion on the main motion?
Pardon me?
Did you get a motion?
Yeah, we just did. Not on the main one. But I made an amendment to it. So now...
We have to put it forward before you make a amendment. But anyways, that's fine.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right. Moving on to the minutes. Recommendation, the council adopts the February 26, 2018 regular meeting minutes as presented. Mover please. Counselor Tripp. Counselor Butler. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. You have no questions or allegations. Number 6A, written reports of council. Recommendation, all written reports of council submitted to the March 12, 2018 regular meeting be received. Mover please. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I just, Counselor Thompson... Counselor Thompson had on her report that she wanted to be removed as the city liaison for the Phoenix Foundation, and I was just wondering if you could explain what the Foundation of Canada rules that we've been breaking apparently?
Yeah, they've probably been broken for the last 20 years. The, the background to that is that... Is that, uh, they don't want major donors to make a donation with the understanding that they will have a seat at the table. And so both the credit union and City of Grand Forks, that was one of the criteria of, of, of giving that grant. And back in 97, and so...
How much is that for?
Hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, and so we just proceeded on that, and a member of council always had a vote at the table. And that's like buying your...
Buying your vote.
Buying your vote, your position, yeah. And so, um, uh, I have said that I were asking mayor to rescind my appointment. Uh, they have asked me to remain as a member, director on the board personally, and I have agreed to do that. So, uh, I just, so council's aware and future councils that there's no need to be appointing liaisons to the Phoenix Foundation.
Counselor Hammond?
So, I'm a bit confused because, um, as a director, you have a vote. As a liaison, you don't have a vote.
I do.
As a liaison or as the director? So I'm a liaison for the DBA. I don't have a vote. I'm just there as a liaison for the city. So the conflict would come when you have a vote.
But the city's liaison, the city's liaison did have a vote at the table of the Phoenix Foundation.
But as a director, you're gonna remain having a vote? And isn't that where the conflict is?
No.
So why does it matter about being liaison?
Um, I was appointed by, by council to be the liaison. That is contrary to the, um, rules and regulations of the Canadian foundations of Canada.
But we don't form the Phoenix Foundation anymore?
We did. And we bought that seat at the table. And so, as did the credit union in excess. And so I find that Klemens and myself are in that position, and I am not the mayor to rescind that because the city no longer needs to have a liaison to that board.
Counselor Tripp and Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor Conwood. Yeah, my concern would be, I think, with what Counselor Hammond has maybe trying to point out too, is that if you're a director on board and you're voting, and especially if it's a foundation that's granting funds, um, as someone sitting on council, could that not proceed as maybe vote by them or maybe influencing somehow?
No. The, uh, they have grants committee that makes recommendations to the board. Grants committee, um, the chair is a board director, but to make up that committee are from the general public who are invited to sit at that table. And they review the grant application, then they make recommendations to the board. And the board, um, accepts their recommendations because they've done all the homework and the background checks. So there's no need, um, there would be no, no conflict whatsoever.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, when I first got on council, I read the part in the community charter where it talks about standing committees and select committees. Standing committees being formed by the mayor with the three members of council and select committees are arranged by council. These are all for city matters. These are city councils. But then we have a practice here where we're appointing liaisons to private organizations within the city, which is different than what's outlined in the community charter. So I'm just wondering if that's a practice that happens in all cities where council is appointing liaisons to private organizations within the city? Because, yeah, I can see how if you're a liaison appointed by council, that then might remove some of your conflict of interest on sitting, um, in at that meeting, but at the same time, any liaison to a private organization, I don't think should have a city person on the board because then it looks like the city is controlling and manipulating that private organization within the community. And I think that's the issue we ran into with the chamber too. We were talking how attending chamber meetings as a liaison and not being on the board is good for the city, but not really fair to the other organizations that don't get to come to those meetings or aren't allowed to have people attend every meeting. So it's kind of a gray area there that I don't think we've ever worked out as a council. And the other thing too, with being in an organization that's in charge of so much money, um, I'm just, we've never actually seen who the donors are to that organization and if organizations are, um, as a director of that organization, if you're receiving money from a corporation or even as an individual that then has a vote come before council for a different project within the city, that even going the other way could be a conflict of interest if they're donating to your organization and then you're voting on their issue before council. So I'd just be curious to know who the donors, the large sums to that organization, have been in the past few years.
So that's information that's, that's not generally shared. People make donations for any number of reasons. Some are substantial, some are in memoriam, some are, uh, some estates have been referred to or granted to the, to the Phoenix Foundation. We don't know who the applicants are until, well, just, uh, we have a meeting on, on Wednesday, uh, and we will be reviewing some of the grant applications that have come in. But those are confidential. And the, um, the, uh, I have no say over who gets a grant other than one vote. I'm one of, uh, seven members that, that sit at the table. So, um, I don't believe I am in conflict. I know that there have been organizations that have come to that and asked the city to use, because you can make donations to the city and it has to be a charitable organization that receives those funds. Uh, and the city has agreed to allow them to use our, uh, the city's C A R number, C R E number, pardon me, um, uh, as, as the, uh, so it's a flow through. So, I mean, I, I personally don't have that many, I have only got a couple more years left before I have to step down from the board. You're only allowed to serve for 12 years, so...
12 years? Holy smokes!
I know. Yeah.
That's like life sentences.
Well, I was on council and I was appointed the liaison, and then I was, Brian Taylor beat me for the mayor's chair, and that was fine. That was, that was okay. I forgive you for that. And so that was another three years that I served as a director. And then the council appointed me, the mayor appointed me, so I spent another three years, so that's nine. Finished this term, it's 10, and then I've only got two more years. So, you know, I, I, I don't think that, that it really is an issue. As a liaison to the chamber, you don't have a vote. You're just there to observe. And, uh, being on the board of the Phoenix Foundation has always been an active member, excuse me, voting member, but, um, now, um, with, with the change, um, I'm just asking that the mayor rescind that appointment.
Just a quick follow-up.
Wait, Counselor Butler.
I imagine that's gonna be hard for the Phoenix Foundation though, as you've just gone down to three for your form, if you're having trouble getting form, and now you're not able to be a director of the chamber? No, you said that the Phoenix Foundation had also gone down to three for reform the other day.
Oh. Yes, yeah, I did. So that, that, that's never been an issue once, I think. I know where that that was an issue. We didn't get to form, so...
So in this case, well, consider your request granted.
You're fired.
Are you playing Donald Trump?
Mr. Trump would say, "Are you a doctor?" All right. All in favor, receive. Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to the next item, which is the report from council representative for regional district community boundary, verbal report from the R D K B rep, which I do myself. In regards to meetings, there was basically only the B C B C, which I attended. And at that meeting, general discussions about budgeting again, as our regional director pointed out this morning when he was present at our committee of the whole meeting. Uh, there was a presentation put forward and a delegation by Kendra Beg from the, uh, the C R C Board, Board Chamber, and he gave an update of the chamber's status in regards to seeking funding and pointed out many issues of fundraisers that were being put in place. In other words, general description of what the chamber's been up to. Uh, Community Futures had their monthly report. Nothing really that stood out. Still working on that 486 Insider app. Obviously, that was it.
What's a 486 Insider app?
It's an app, something like what we had presented, what was called In the Loop. So a similar concept that they're trying to gather all the information from all of the directors and to see where our position is on that. Other than that, that's pretty much it. So now, motion for receipt. Counselor Crowe, seconded. Counselor Tripp? Counselor Butler?
Yeah, there's been a bit of discussion the last couple of weeks about counselors' reports and, you know, format, what we should be presenting, and I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if you'd have a flavor for presenting the same way as the rest of council in a written format for us so that we can get a more detailed report on events with the regional district?
Actually, in response to that, no, because there's also the regional district website. So the, the fact of duplication is unnecessary because that's what it would become, because I think a more statistical data could be put forward, which is on their website, and we've already done that for the last little while.
Yeah, it's just, uh, the idea of having a rep is so that counselors don't each have to go through the minutes of everybody's organization, that we can have a summary brought back to us. Just they've, you know, we can't all have our eyes on all the different reports out there, and to get a summary from our rep, I think, is the point of having that rep there.
I'm recalling what we've been doing for the last couple of years and even previously, I don't think there was ever any written reports. It was mostly always verbal, so I plan to continue the same format. Okay. All those in favor, receive. Anyone opposed? So carry. Next item is recommendations from staff for decisions. Subject matter, freedom of information budgeting for 2018 from the C O S I corporate officer, F O I head. Recommendation, the council determines to include in the 2018 financial plan an amount of $20,000 to address expenses due specifically to freedom of information requests. Mover please. Counselor Thompson, seconded. Counselor Crowe. Discussion, Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I just wanted to say for the record, Mr. Mayor, I think it's unfortunate that these issues are coming up. I think most of us, when we ran, ran on a platform of transparency, and the more information council can release to the public from in-camera meetings, the less items that are taken in camera, I think the more trust that the public would have and the less need that they would have to be applying for all these freedom of information requests. And unfortunately, council has chosen not to go down that road of releasing documents, so we find ourselves spending an extra $20,000.
Counselor Ross?
Oh, thank you. So I want to apologize for being late. I couldn't just stop my car because my car was dead and my truck was dead. Dumped my tractor and did that one. So, um, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, but I just, people need to understand that, you know, freedom of information isn't about in-camera information at all. It's often just frivolous in nature, extremely frivolous, frivolous in nature, and it does cost the city our money, staff time. It's, uh, it, you know, I mean, I've been F O I and it's frivolous. And, um, so it's just, it's not, you know, because of, when we go to in-camera, it's always, okay, what can we, what can we, what can we get out of here? What can we put out of, out of in-camera to the public? And it's not because we're not wanting to be transparent, no big secrets, nothing clandestine, and many of these requests are just nothing but frivolous.
Counselor Thompson?
I have to agree, and, and it is the taxpayers that have to pick up that cost. And that is very, very unfortunate. There are times when, when maybe there's good reason to, to request information that maybe hasn't been released, or you want, you want some background on whatever, but, um, some of these requests that, um, that do come in, um, take up a lot of time. And, uh, and it, it is to the point where it's not just the documents and the photocopying and that. It's our staff's time that is being taken away from other very, very, very valuable work that they need to be doing. And with regret, they're not because they're taken away from what they should be doing and responding to these kinds of frivolous requests for information. So, uh, when that happens and we have to ask for additional monies to be put into the budget for that, please don't complain to us. Those that are making those kinds of requests that are having us required to, to increase the budget.
Let me weigh in briefly on this. I agree with Counselor Ross's statement. Transparency has nothing to do with this issue. We as council, we try our best to release whatever we can out of in-camera, but in a lot of cases, in the majority of cases, when we hold in-camera, we are legislatively bound to not be able to release the information. So this is like Counselor Ross stated. This is not things going on that are being secret, but we just not, because then we put the corporation at risk. Hope everybody can understand that.
I think Julia wants to draw a little button. I think Ben wanted to throw your question.
Counselor Tripp? And Counselor Butler?
No, I, thank you, Mayor Conwood, and I did want to say that I think if people were to read the explanation that the staff has given, and read that very diligently and very carefully, um, it explains really well what's going on. And, um, it, it, basically what's there is exactly what's happening. So, um, yeah, I think I'm, I'm grateful that staff expressed it as well as they did on the, on the sheet there.
All right. Counselor Butler, did you?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, under section 90, section 91, 90.1, there's, what, A through O of reasons that you may go in camera, that you don't must, you don't have to go in camera, you're not legislatively bound. And most of the time, we go under land, legal, and labor. It's a may, it's not a must. Section 90.2, there's four different reasons why you have to go in camera. There's no question about it, absolutely. You know, when you're bound legislatively, yeah, you go in camera, but most of the time we do have a choice. And council had a choice with one of these F O I requests, and we decided not to. We decided not to release it. So it's not like we didn't have the choice. We did, and everyone made up their own minds. I, I felt maybe that some of these things could have been released, and the rest of you had a different opinion, and we, that's fine. That's how council works. But unfortunately, we had the decision, and we chose not to, and it's costing us. That's just how it is.
One, one take. What do you have to think?
Counselor Thompson?
Just one more and one last comment that I would like to make. Where we have had in-camera meetings to discuss items under any of the categories that Counselor Butler referred to, where we can, we do release that in camera, where we think it's in the best interest of the community as a whole. But sometimes there's things that you need to, to talk about in camera, particularly when it comes to land, legal, and labor, and those are pretty much all that, uh, all that can be discussed. And once a decision has been made, then it is shared. I said, where, where it comes in.
Unfortunately, staff's recommendations to council all the times on some of these subject matters do lead us possibly down a path that we do not have the ability to make that decision and will not be willing to take the risk that if it is a may going to get in camera, the may could turn into serious repercussions. So we do not want to gamble with this just for the fact that we will look like we are not being transparent. Unfortunately, this amount of money sure represents quite an amount, but some of the legal ramifications that could occur should we have erred in our judgment could cost way more. And that's the reasoning why. I will call the question now. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to information items. 10A, engineering consulting services contract from our manager of development engineering. Uh, subject matter, council denotes that staff has the option to provide extensions to the existing contract with Urban Systems Limited on a manual basis. Recommendation, as council receives a memorandum from the manager of development engineering with regard to an extension of the engineering consulting services contract with Urban Systems Limited to February 28, 2019. Mover please. Counselor Hammond, seconded. Counselor Thompson. Discussion, Counselor Tripp. Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor Conwood. Yeah, the question on this would be that, um, that this would not preclude staff from being able to go to any other consulting firm if they needed to go to like a specific, somebody more specific? This is just a general, um, contract, is it? Thank you.
Counselor Butler and then Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, I had asked about this back in the fall and was told that this contract was coming up again, that it was expiring, and I thought at the time we were gonna go up for an R F P because I think it's prudent for us to make sure that we are getting the best price, um, you know, fresh eyes on the subject. I know it's nice to have the continuity, and it's nice to hear that staff does have the, have the option to choose. I just wanted to clarify then that this isn't soul sourcing, um, and that we are planning on going up for an R F P in the future. There's many good engineering firms out there that other cities use, and it would be nice to, to just double check and make sure that we are getting the best deal for our market.
Let me just weigh on this briefly. One comment to that statement, Counselor Butler. Price is not always everything. When you have an organization that represents the city and has been with the corporation for many, many years, they have the background, history, they have the possibility of possibly doing certain projects with much faster expediency because of their experience and knowledge of the corporation. So I'm not even...
I'm aware of that, Mr. Mayor. I'm quite aware of that. Thank you.
Well, then, a statement like that regarding price is not an issue to be brought up. So I will leave it to our manager of development engineering to comment further. And then Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For complex contracts, uh, contracts like the engineering and architectural, um, it's not about price. In the United States, they've been doing qualifications-based selection. It was mandated in 1970 with the Brooks Act. So qualifications-based selection for architectural engineering services for public construction projects. So this is not unusual. Canada's been behind. Calgary currently does it, Quebec does it, Mr. Transportation and Infrastructure has the automated version that they use, and it is the standard for selecting service contracts for complex projects and complex situations like we deal with with our engineering projects. So we went out for, when we went out for R F P in 2012, that was the competitive process that we went through, and that frees us up to use Urban Systems as our engineering firm without having to go out for an R F P or R Q for every single project. If we had to vote for R F P or R Qs and quotes for every single engineering project that we did, it would cost us a considerable amount of money and staff time. Tendering and R F Ps and R Qs take a ton of time, especially qualification-based type service. They are extremely complex procurement processes. We would spend a lot of money with our legal team on it in reviewing the, when we're doing our selections. So it's not something that we take lightly. It's going to be a very large project when we can decide to undertake it. Uh, we are currently in the middle of $7 million in capital projects, of which Urban Systems is intricately involved this year. It would be, um, a really bad decision to vote this year for, for an engineer. And something I would like to point out with our grant writing is that when Urban Systems writes our grants, we don't pay them. They get paid when they get the contract or when we get the contract. So it's in their best interest to do a good job for us when they write grants because they don't have to get paid for writing those grants or helping us with those grants. So they write technical memos, they put together budget estimates, they will do preliminary design work. Whatever the grant criteria is, they put it together for us. We do the, the rest of it. We've worked very closely with their team to put these together, and they are the reason that we have been so successful in getting the grants that we've gotten in the past few years. And also the fact that they've authored so many of our engineering reports and our projects, so when we need something quick, they can do it. If we need a, a report updated that they already written, they can quickly update it for us. I will give you an example of something just, just last Friday, not just Friday, Friday before, I got an email from the province regarding one of the grants, and at 3:57 on Friday afternoon, and they said, submit a report by Monday at 4 o'clock. And Urban Systems submitted the report at 3:57 on Monday. So that's why we have a contract engineering firm. We talk to Urban Systems almost daily. I would say that there's at least somebody from this organization that's speaking to them on a daily basis, and that is the reason for having a contract engineering firm. And we, and, I mean, they have, they haven't messed up in a huge way for us or anything like that, so we haven't had any... so we haven't had any real reason to go out of time, but we will be looking at a competitive process. They should be rounding up those sort of projects by March of next year, and we'll be looking, waiting for a process to happen.
Counselor Hammett and then Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that my experience with Urban Systems, I've been quite happy with, with the way they've conducted themselves with the city and, and what they've offered us, and I just wanted, and I was glad to hear that they do the grant writing, and they don't get paid for that, because I know, I've been talking with them at, at conferences, they do, there's a nonprofit portion, charitable portion of the organization, that they do a lot of stuff for free, and I just wanted to make sure that we were taking advantage of that, their generosity in helping us, and I see that they have been in, in helping us obtain grants and doing all of that technical workforce.
I think just getting heard is an example. Want to do a quick, a, rather.
Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Prentice.
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 Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we don't have a contract engineering firm, I was actually suggesting exactly what you said, that at the end of this year, that we go out for tender. So it's good to hear that we're doing that. Urban Systems isn't the only show in town. Yes, they're very qualified, but there are tech engineering, there's many other engineering firms out there that are qualified as well. And we do spend a lot of money, a lot of money on engineering, so it's very important that we do make sure that we get the best deal for our money, and it's great to hear that staff is working well with them, that they're, they're involved in a lot of our projects. But, you know, a lot of other engineering firms also have those qualifications. So it's not like I'm suggesting we go with some fly-by-night organization because they're cheap, I'm just saying that we do our homework and make sure that, that when we're investing taxpayers' dollars, that we're, that we are getting the best deal.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Boundary Emergency Transitional Housing Society, otherwise known as BETHs. Subject matter is a letter request for meeting with two-person city delegation and two-person B C housing delegation to create plan for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and the recommendation is that council discusses the meeting request from the Boundary Emergency Transitional Housing Society. Move or please. Counselor Ross, second. Counselor Hammett. Discussion. Counselor Butler.
So I guess I'm not understanding this properly, because this is something that would have to be a decision of council moving forward, so is this delegation of two people just going to go and have a discussion and then bring the response back to the council?
Your worship, I did talk to Mr. Taylor and wanted to know exactly, you know, what the intent is, and from his advisement, that the intent of the meeting would be preferably an elected official and a staff member from the city, he'd like to preferably in the planning area that has some knowledge of different sort of processes and things like that. So that is the request that they're looking for, and I believe that they are planning on, on setting up the meeting, the proposed meeting, as that will all possible, and that there is, from Mr. Taylor, said that there was a great deal of frustration right now with the way things are, and they just want to be able to have a really open dialogue meeting as, as a six-person group.
And as I had mentioned, I will be attending that meeting with our manager of engineering, I believe is what we are discussing. Any other discussions?
Is that a decision for council to make, which two people we're sending? Is that why this is being brought to force?
Well, there's not a request, a question, a discussion, a meeting request.
So they have one elected official and one staff?
I will be attending that discussion. An elected official. Yep.
Well, council should, I think, should appoint the person that's going as well, somebody that is good to rapport with us, I think would be preferable, but I have a good rapport with us. I'd be happy to send Counselor Ross.
Well, respectfully, the mayor has volunteered, so I mean, I'm happy, you know, obviously, but I volunteer to be an alternate.
Do we should put that a motion to forward?
Yeah, and again, interacting to our communications policy, the mayor is the spokesperson for council and the city, so I don't think that this is a necessity for council to elect or vote someone to go to this meeting.
Your floor, Mr. Mayor.
Just that you are making a decision on behalf of council or on behalf of the city?
We are, we're realistically not making any decisions at this, the way this letter is, the intent is there, it's basically, I would believe, and it's just supposed to be for collaborative support. Mr. Taylor can comment on that during our discussion at the end of the meeting if he wishes to, unless we want to give unanimous consent, he could speak to this. But the way I understand this letter, they have been frustrated through all these, because I remember when Gene Roberts was involved, Judith Law, it seems that B C housing seems to be kind of dangling them, and not much is happening, I must say it quite bluntly. And there is a, an involvement of the city to support this initiative, and I feel that's what the request is, so that we can collaboratively sit down with B C housing, because at the time when the city was involved, we turned it over at their request to Gene Roberts and Judith Law, and they sent.
Lloyd.
Lloyd, sorry, to, my apologies, to take the reins, so to speak, and they were quite ecstatic about that. But it seemed that even after that housing, at the Senior Center for Affordable Housing at Workshop, I confronted Ann Howard, and I said, what has happened, because it's been a while now, and there was a bit of reluctance of a response, insofar as, well, we can talk about that another time. So there again, that gave me right away an insight that something is, is not really happening here on the B C housing aspect, and I could see where it's at. And Mr. McGivern has also commented on that on numerous occasions, that they're not getting any responses. So I can see Mr. Taylor's request and prerequisites that he's asking. Counselor Tripp and then Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I certainly agree that all the parties involved should be getting together and sitting down at the table, because it really seems like until that happens, there's this disconnect. And the left hand is being told one thing, and the right hand is being told another, and it doesn't seem like anybody's actually moving forward. And I think there is a real appetite on council for things to move forward in, in some shape or form. I also would be certainly willing to move that you would go and represent the city with whoever you felt on staff was, was the most appropriate to go. But the thing about this, just the part of this letter that I'm just not quite clear about, was that the word consensus moving forward, and I guess, I, I just don't really quite know what your ask is there, because there are some, some things that we're still, that we haven't totally nailed down and that are in camera. And so I just, I don't know if maybe we could ask Mr. Taylor just to speak to what his expectation is there on the consensus moving forward, certainly when it comes to, it says including a proposed site, what, what his expectation was there. Would that be something that the council would be open to Mr. Taylor commenting on right now?
Well, if council has a favor to unanimously allow Mr. Taylor to speak, definitely so.
Well, to me, it sounds like there are some decisions that need to be made here, just from the wording on that, so I would like to hear.
Yeah.
Now put forward that motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Shouldn't we ask him if he wants to speak? That will be my next question, if he's willing to speak on the topic. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I, I think there is some common ground, maybe consensus was the wrong word, but if we don't, the consequences that other communities have faced is a loss of support from B C housing. I think this community is moving into a really critical phase at the end of this month that we need to prepare for with a plan. And I'm hoping that this face-to-face will give us a start point where we can begin to look for that common ground as quickly as possible, or those monies are gonna float by to other communities who have it together. So I think some creativity and face-to-face is what we see as the only way forward. And yes, we are very frustrated, we feel like we're caught between the two sides here. That, you know, it's clear and I think common knowledge that what B C housing is saying is, no deal with the city, no money.
Thank you. And there again, I reiterate, that's exactly the reasoning why we need solid support from the city, which we've mentioned before, when we had discussions in our boardroom with B C housing on the similar subject, when we had Gene Roberts and Judith present. And there seemed to have been such positivity in their approach, and yet, all of a sudden, everything just went south. It's, it seems very strange that that would occur, for what reasoning, and this is why, without, let's say, if you want to look at it as being on an ego trip, this is why I feel as mayor and the head of the city, I should be present at that meeting, because I think that will definitely wrap up, because I really want to be involved in this discussion, and just find out why B C housing is dragging its tail, so to speak. Counselor Hammett.
Yeah, this is a very frustrating situation. We've seen it unfold now for the past two or three years, where there's been conversations amongst a number of different groups and organizations within the community, with B C housing, and every group's being told a different, something different. And they're being given promises that nothing is materialized. And the city has worked with BETHs to try and get something in place. BETHs has been told one thing from B C housing, the city's been told something different, the boundary women's coalition's been told something totally different. I mean, everybody that's been dealing with B C housing is getting promises, and nothing's actually happening. So I, I think it would be good to wrap this up and at least get a commitment from them so that something can be done, because regardless of how it's done, we need the funding to move forward.
Even if it's not a commitment, but at least to see that everyone is going in the right direction on this, because it seems to be that everything is just up in the air right now, there's nothing solid, there's no, if we want to use the word commitment, I doubt that we would probably get a commitment right on the onslaught there. That's just my apprehension and perception of this, because, because of what we've gone through, what I've experienced at meetings with them. But without sounding uncondescending, though, if I look at the positive aspect of this, and I think this in a, if you want to call it a six-way person dialogue, hopefully we can accomplish something this time, if there's some solidarity there, and let's, and basically we won't let B C housing leave the room.
Yeah. Just to follow up with that, this, the situation that we're in now is by no fault of any of the groups within our community that have been trying so hard. You know, we've all been working towards the same goal, and so it's not like our groups haven't been working for this, and we just aren't getting any response, and the ones that we are getting are not being followed through this.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the question, unless there's any more discussion.
Do we need to nominate you then?
Yeah.
I move that Mayor Conrad represent the city in a delegation to meet with BETHs and B C housing, and that Counselor Ross act as the.
Oh.
As the.
Well, we don't have that authority. We don't have the authority to delegate that staff.
Well, and a member of staff just. Well, yeah. Your worship, if you could just, it's just a member of staff.
Yeah. The staff will decide that.
Also. Got it there, Daniel?
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler, so carry. Okay, now we go back to the original question, and calling the question on that one. All those in favor? The discussion element.
Oh, we had it on the floor first.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
All right.
So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to the bylaw section eleven A. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, by the way, for commenting on giving your statement. Third reading of the O C P bylaw amendment and zoning bylaw replaced the repeal development and engineering services. Recommendation is council gives third reading to the Official Community Plan bylaw amendment nineteen nineteen dash A two. Counselor Crowe, Counselor Ross, any discussion? Counselor Butler and Counselor Ross, I think Counselor Ross will be first, go ahead.
Thank you.
Well, this is sort of a nice part of being a counselor, because it's something I've certainly been talking about since I occupied this chair, is the need for affordable housing and the changing of our bylaws in order to make that happen. This isn't just about affordable housing either, it's about something that is referred to as the missing middle, in terms of what we talked about this morning, which is sort of like the quiver or the pallet that we have in order to meet many housing needs, just not the needs of families and people who are gainfully employed and are here for the long term or are a video for generations. But it's also for the young people, the newly graduated professionals that are coming to Grand Forks to work in businesses, and started their own businesses here, and maybe paying off student loans, like my own children, and are in a rental market until they decide where they want to go next, or they can pay off their student loan and afford to take on mortgage. That's part of the missing middle. Another part of the missing middle are people who want to age in place, people who have homes, and they want to stay in their homes. They don't want to be institutionalized as they, as they finding their homes are too big, and they don't want to care for those big houses, but they want to age in place because there's security there and there's familiarity. And they have kids who are willing to move into the main house, but they, you know, sometimes mom and dad don't want to share space with their kids and their families, and that's where the old granny suite came in, or that carriage house, that laneway house. So I still have my independence and my privacy, but they, I live close to the family. So that's a part of the missing middle that we often don't talk about, which are the seniors. So I think this is a very important part of creating housing stock in our community, and it's happening throughout British Columbia, and I referred to this morning, the laneway house survey results revealed from the, from the survey done by the city of Nelson, and it talks about these very things. And over seventy-five percent of the people that responded to that survey supported densifying housing in the city of Nelson. And some, some people will never, never do it, but a lot of people have an opportunity to put in a flat on their house or put in a small laneway house. And I think it's very clear, it's not going to, the same bylaws have to be adhered to, it has to fit in with form and character, safety and building code must be complied with, so I don't see this to be a threat in any way, but it certainly is gonna fill in that missing middle gap.
Counselor Butler and then Counselor Hammett.
Thanks, and just a question for staff, Mr. Mayor. With the laneway houses, how are we going to deal with the snowplowing for people that are now have access off the laneways? Will this increase our snowplow budget for the wintertime, and also lighting in the alleyways? Will that be required now if there's a house block there?
Mayor, thank you. So there's a, there's been a number of questions that have come up for clarification, so I've actually got a short presentation that I can give on some of these questions. Would the mayor wish that I could present that?
Please do. Is it animated?
Wow. Is that, is that better? Okay.
No.
All right, so refusing to put the money in, nobody can. Okay, so just briefly, I'm gonna go over the process that we spent over the last two years getting to this point, focus on a little bit of the changes and how they aim to have one piece of affordability, and then some of the questions and answers that have come up for clarification for the last while. So going back through the files, I realize that in two thousand and fourteen, staff was already diligently, diligently looking at tiny houses and eco homes as an emerging trend, and starting to draft bylaws on, on how they could potentially come about in Grand Forks. In the June two thousand and sixteen open house, the O C P Official Community Plan Update, In the June 2016 Open House, the OCP Official Community Plan Update presented this as one of the themes to discuss and showed examples of tiny houses and pocket neighborhoods to be received. Throughout that year, staff undertook analysis of 2011 and 2016 Canadian Census data plus data from the Canadian Rental Housing Index specific to Grand Forks and the Boundary. The mayor recall that sort of showed the critical rental situation in Grand Forks and the Boundary. That was followed up on the Affordable Housing Survey over that winter. And there was a great desire for a diversity of housing stock, smaller homes, detached suites, over-interested apartments, townhomes, interesting. So people like fit it all over, I think, and that was a strong desire to show in the survey. February 2017, there was the workshop down at the seniors hall and there's a discussion and a representation on the restrictions in the zoning bylaw that challenged affordable housing. And then in July, I presented a detailed proposal to counsel for the bylaw changes that could come about. By fall, there was the open house, I think it was actually the opening member of the open house, and then the first reading, public hearing, and the second, second reading. So extensive public input, analysis, and several iterations of the, of the bylaw to understand and respond to the needs in the community. Overall, this is, it's about more than small homes, as we recall from the Official Community Plan. It's really about clarifying sustainability to include affordable housing, to look at the whole lifecycle costs and impacts on everything from infrastructure to the climate system. And there's several policy statements introduced in the draft, changes to the Official Community Plan to support affordable housing initiatives, including community partnerships, and removing barriers to developing this diversity of housing stock. So it's understood that there's many players, many partners that need to help make it happen. So just some examples, waiving fees, providing density bonuses, permissive tax exemptions, revitalization tax exemptions. The planning theme, the planning idea that was brought forward was the incremental development. So many small investments over a broad area of time and seeing all neighborhoods on a continuum of improvement. So the traditional neighborhood development is, you know, a cul-de-sac where everything gets engineered, built out, designed at once. It's a large investment at once, and it tends to drive up the price of housing quite often because you're going to a certain maximum, maximization of market, you know, investment. And it really tends to exclude starter homes, aging in place, and that incremental kind of aspect where maybe someone wants to add a little bit of rental capacity and they don't want to have it inside their house. So this was kind of the, the planning, planning theme exactly for the removal of barriers. One of the key items that came up in discussions with council and the community was concern about how these would look and feel. Would they, would they fit? What are the impacts in the neighborhood? And so staff proposed requiring a development permit area to be issued for the placement of any detached accessory dwelling unit. And there's some elements in the Official Community Plan for those guidelines. We'll go a little bit more into detail in those in a few moments. And this one has generated so much interest, dozens of emails and phone calls and a lot of interest from around Canada, actually North America, has come on this. And so staff did a lot of research on what the possibilities were and also what the constraints were. And it's a little bit of a gray area in a way, between categories in, in terms of building code, because you can build them to the building code except they're on wheels. And so it doesn't quite fit that way. They're not really recreational vehicles. Some people are building RVs as tiny houses. So we came up with a solution. The building inspector talked about a way of doing it that would enable code compliance and conditional occupancy with a temporary use permit until they found their resting place where they, where they could be converted into a garden suite. And that way, basically, there is a chance for improperly built tiny home on wheels to come to town or to be dealt here preferably so that the building inspector can make sure everything's done up properly. And then if they haven't figured out exactly where they're going yet, they can, they can still have a, have a site established there. And the other place where there wouldn't be as many constraints is, of course, security in industrial areas and the opportunity of having a tiny home on wheels as a watchperson quarters is kind of a good place to start to see them in town without having them in residential areas specifically. So watchperson quarters is a permitted dwelling unit in residential or industrial areas. So some of the constraints, we talked about the needing the development permits. This allows for a full operational review and referral for every development. We already do an internal in-depth review for any building permit that bumps up against lot lines or has access issues and that kind of thing. This just kind of elevates a little bit more so that staff and council are fully familiar with how they fit. The other change is, you know, with the requirement of one parking lot or parking space for dwelling under 90 square meters, that we included that in the open and the space required. So I want to show two examples here. On the left is down in 66th Ave, neighborhood near the cemetery. You see a thousand square meter lot, a small 100 square meter house and a 50 square meter large shed. Overall, that comes to a 15% lot coverage. So on the left side of this lot, behind the garden, there's actually room for an accessory dwelling unit, either replace the shed or, or in addition to it, depending on how they wish to configure if this person was coming in. There's a lot of lots like this in town where having an additional suite would, you know, there's opportunities for access and that kind of thing. And it's just a matter of seeing how it fits in a lot. On another lot, a larger home, 370 seven square meter footprint house on a 807 square meter lot and an 11 square meter shed, right now it's at 44% lot coverage. If you add the parking space at the front here, that's 50 square meters, that actually is bumped up to 50.2. So if they wanted to have a detached unit or an additional suite, they would actually, they would bump up against that density limitation. So it's not going to work on every lot. There's a lot of places where there isn't really room for access to garden suite in the back. And this is the type of analysis that staff would do on a case-by-case basis in the presentation for the development permits. Couple of other clarifications that came up, just in terms of making sure they fit together. The tiny houses on wheels won't be allowed in R1A. There are no suites or accessory dwelling units allowed there. So that was pulled up from the beginning. A three-year non-renewable temporary use permit, the whole notion is that they, they, the desire is for them to be permanent. A lot of the tiny house movement appeared to come up because of the, the minimum building size was 800 square feet for homes, and people wanted to get around that and have much smaller, but they had to put it on wheels so that they didn't need a building permit. And this is kind of, it's an awkward workaround and it doesn't need to be that way. So it's kind of, we would like them to be part of the community ultimately. I, I think the idea of lighting should be considered as an additional clause in the development permit guidelines. So for instance, as an example of one that could be included, I know it can be included by resolution tonight if we want, or we can add it in the next update, OCP. But for instance, motion activated, security lighting should be provided on access to garden suite or laneway houses. So that's an example of language I would be adding to clarify a development permit requirement. Some of the other questions came up that were quite operational, where they're done by the building inspector and fire chief, also these capacity fire and building code requirements, of course. The R3A multifamily detached, that's an example of a pocket neighborhood there. We've actually already had a serious inquiry from a developer who owns three compact lots not far from downtown and wishes to assemble them and, and put in some small modules on them. So we could be seeing an example, pocket neighborhood with six homes in the future, maybe here back from him.
Will it look something like that?
Ah, that's, that's one possibility. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I think council's seen that probably 12 times. And then, and this is actually a great discussion about laneways. So I regularly walk the neighborhoods and look at, look at the back alleys and look at how things are fitting. We have some really narrow lanes that are 12-foot lanes, for instance, that present some challenges for operations already. Not all lanes should be considered as a primary access, but some of them are quite appropriate. We already have two good examples with parallel the highway where no highway access is allowed, and also on riverside where there's the dyke at the front, front side of the, where the road is the dyke. So they all require rear vehicle access. So on a site-by-site basis, operations determine the service level that meets the needs. And if there is an increase in demand, that could be met, but largely, you know, a few additional passes with snowplowing, some additional mowing or dust clearing can take it quite far. And then some light treatment, hardening is also an option if there's a lot of demand. So rather than full asphalt, some kind of, you know, service code, seal code option for heavy traffic is required just to keep it from getting too dusty and muddy in those spots. So there's, there's service options that can be addressed coming up that is a gradual process here at the Capitol at all times. Is there demand? So there's continuing increase of tiny homes on wheels, two cottage or multi-cottage pocket neighborhood lots. We've been getting calls from all over the place, all over the place where people were waiting for this bylaw to pass. And I was quite surprised at the interest. I think the tiny house tour of Peter Mathis's house that was all over the internet helped with some of the interest. But in analyzing the response to Nelson's survey, they're looking to potentially ease the restrictions and increase the maximum size. I should note that ours is currently 90 square meters, which is 25 square meters above the Nelson's, Nelson's current requirement. So they're looking to potentially increase it to that amount as well. So the market and financing will partly determine how to uptake and, you know, operations and, and development engineering review of the servicing issues as they arrive, as they arise. And so that basically allows for your response to any challenges and kind of...
Counselor Ross?
Um, so just looking at, like what Nelson's done as an example, is they allow, and Graham, you might have asked for that, they allow a secondary suite or a laneway house, but not both. And I completely understand the rationale for that. So how are we going to deal with that? Is that going to be explicit in the bylaw?
You're so jealous.
To the mayor, thank you. So it's actually, it's, it's partly flexible due to the way that we define density in the zoning bylaws. So if you, for instance, had a smaller house and a micro suite, so that's defining the building code is under 329 square feet, that is... I can't remember on these purposes. Now, I've got a conversion cable in the, in the new draft. So basically, if there was a very small suite inside the home and a, and an external suite, it could be permitted if there was room for all the parking on the sites. It's a little bit site-specific. So it depends on, like currently, the current density as it is, most lots allow a duplex. And so the new bylaw doesn't allow any increase in density over the duplex when you consider a new number of people. But you could have a single family dwelling with a, with a suite and an external if there was room for it on the lot and they met that density requirement. So between, yeah, 29 square meters and 90 square meters is considered 0.7 of a, of a unit for density, and below 29 square meters, over 321 square feet, 39 square feet, is a, is a 0.3 of a unit. And so this flexibility in sizing allows for like a one-person micro suite or, you know, the equivalent of a garden suite, that's a tiny house on wheels permanently established and having minimal impact.
Is it going to be a height, is it going to be a height restrictions?
More than 75% of the primary dwelling.
Okay.
Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, so if you had, say, for example, a half acre lot in the city and you had a house that was 2,500 square feet and you rented out the basement suite, you could still put in a laneway house or secondary unit out in the back, even if you have family living in your basement, you know, 50% of your house, because it's all based on your gross density of your lot size, right? It's not, and if, as long as you only seat that 50%, you've got, that includes parking for all tenants, that wouldn't make any difference, right?
To the mayor, there, if it was a small 2,500 square foot house, the basement would have to, the basement suite would still have to be less than 950 square feet as per the building code requirements. So a suite can't be larger than that amount. But ultimately, the suite would be considered as 0.7 of density. They could still, if they have room for the additional parking space for the suite downstairs and the garden suite, they, they could conceivably do that.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, and I really appreciate the response to a lot of the questions that I've had over the period of time that we've been engaging with this and getting it up to this point. That you've done a really good job and a lot of those questions that I had have been answered. And so I really want to thank you. Sometimes we just have to engage with this stuff and work with it and get it to a point where we can understand it. And, and I think there's also been some issues identified maybe even out of it as well, like the laneway lighting. That's a really good compromise, I think, and something that, you know, if we do need to have that for the laneway homes, maybe that's working. I don't know if that would have to change the entire bylaw down the road, or it's just something that we could put in somewhere down, yeah, down the road. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all you've done to respond to the many questions that I had.
Yeah, I really appreciate the work, staff. But indeed, you've obviously done a lot of homework on it and bring to speak very well to the work that you've done here. I am still concerned. I know, I know we need extra housing and I will vote in favor of this bylaw, but I didn't, I moved here from the city where I grew up in a neighborhood similar to the one I live in now. And when I left, it was very different because every house had another house in between it. And 1,000 square feet is not a tiny house. That's the same size that my house is. It would be like putting two of my houses on my lot, which, I know it's only 50% lot coverage, but when you start, you know, doubling the amount of houses in the neighborhood, it changes the pace of the neighborhood. And hopefully it doesn't happen too fast.
No more discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to the second recommendation under this, is that Counselor gives third reading to the zoning bylaw 2039. Counselor Ross, second. Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Third recommendation. Counselor gives third reading to the zoning bylaw repeal 1606-01. Counselor Thompson, second. Counselor Tripp. Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. And last, Counsel direct staff forward, OCP bylaw 1919-A2 and zoning bylaw 2039 to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure for approval. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Hammond. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, we have gone through our agenda, other than the late item, which is the one that is being brought back to the table for reconsideration. So I will read it as it is. Resolve that council approves a 2018 project budget of $65,000 for the SolarNow project and direct staff to include the project budget in the 2018 to 2022 financial plan bylaw. Counselor Ross, second. Counselor Hammond. Any discussion? Counselor Ross and then Counselor Tripp.
I think we have to be careful as counselors before we ask that resolution to be brought back to the table, because sometimes we're not happy with the way it turned out, so we'll say, let's do it again. But I just feel that this is really different. When I looked at the, watched the last council meeting, which unfortunately I had to miss, I felt that there wasn't, there was, there was a lot of information there, but it was, I don't think it was really that clear. And looking at the Climate Action Review incentive, revenue incentive program and something that we are a part of, that we are part of the climate leadership, we have joined the program, that the funds that have been set aside for SolarNow have to be used specifically for a project that demonstrates... for a project that demonstrates our intention and our commitment to offset our carbon, our offset our carbon footprint. And this project does that. And it does so much more than that as well. As we live in one of the sunniest valleys in the province, it is, also demonstrates our willingness and our interest in exploring new and upcoming technologies. And not that solar is a new and upcoming technology, because it's been around a long time. It's just that it's constantly being improved and renewed. It also is a point of interest for young people and students to gather and learn. It shows leadership, and it also helps to put us on a map in a good way. Summerland just received $6 million for a major solar project from the federal government. And this puts us, if we start doing these kinds of projects, if we embrace these projects and embrace these opportunities, we start, we become a louder blip on the radar, that we are progressive, that we are interested, that we are trying, and we are paying attention to the needs not of only of our community now, but moving into the future. I believe it is very forward-thinking. And I noted, 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 there was concern that this is, this does not earn revenue. Nowhere in CARP, in the CARP project, does it require that it earn revenue. It just has to demonstrate our desire to offset our carbon footprint. And I'm not sure if there's, there may be more information from our staff person who's taking the lead, and that perhaps wasn't offered at the last meeting. But I encourage, I encourage counsel to support this project. I think it's an exciting project, and it's one of, I know there's a lot of interest in Grand Forks about more solar.
Counsel Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I was one of the ones who voted against the original SolarNow project. And since then, I've been made aware of some information, and I did send it along to the rest of council and Counselor Ross as well, about a new technology that has, is coming out, I don't believe it's out yet, that's on the graphene solar panels. Apparently, their efficiency is just massively more than, than the other ones. And then we would be put in a position where we would be getting a lot more money, you know, from the use of the solar panels in, in terms of energy. And so I guess my questions would be, how long can we wait? Because if this technology is going to be out within the next year, how long can we wait on a project? Because we're going to have to do something eventually anyway. And might, might this go into these new graphene solar panels be a better option, just because they're so, they're so much more economical and they will produce so much more energy?
Do you have any information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The project does need to go ahead in 2018. However, the panels themselves are the least expensive part of solar installation now. So they, right now, cost about a dollar per watt. And if you look at the project budget, that would be about a quarter to, to a fifth of the project budget. So when, or if these new panels come to mass market, if we were to swap out the panels that were in there, that, that wouldn't be like redoing the project. It would be like repurposing the current panels, eventually even just adding in additional panels.
So just enhancing the project, so to speak.
That's right, because it wouldn't be the primary cost of the project. It, it would be more feasible to swap them out given that the other infrastructure, the electrical and the franks for the panels would already be in place.
Perfect. Counsel Butler.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why this location was chosen, say, over the library, which I think we talked about before, and there was concerns about the angle of the solar panels on the roof. If it were over the, covering the stage area, that it wouldn't be facing the sun properly. Also, the snow coverage in the winter, our staff can get up there and clear the snow coverage, the fallout from rock salt that covers the panels, or we're going to be up there cleaning them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The location is not finalized. There are a few different locations that are still under technical review. So if the budget is approved and the project moves forward, then there will be that review of the location, including a detailed analysis of the solar radiation hitting that spot, as well as the optimum angles for the panels. Until that's done, we don't know which is the best location for the panels. The one requirement that we're working to for the funder is that the panels be in a public location that is, is essentially on display. But the, the, your four different locations around town that are under review are all, all fit that criteria.
Hey, I have a comment to make, and I was also one that voted against this last time, and that's why I brought it back for reconsideration. Because of the fact, at that time, my view was the return on the project, but that was a short-term vision on my part, looking for a longer term, seeing what possibilities could occur with this project, especially when we have an example in Summerland. As Counselor Ross had stated, yes, it kind of puts us on the map, puts us on the radar, and who knows what we can do in the future with this. And that's the whole intent, why as elected officials we are here. We should be looking for the future of what we are possibly able to give to our constituents and to our community. That's the primary goal, why we are in office. So this is why I brought it back for reconsideration. I think it's a viable project for future needs of this community, especially being one of the, especially being one of the five communities that have their own electrical utility. Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, worship, through you, Counsel Butler. Did you, you made a statement of rock salt, well, it's not rock wool.
Sorry.
What, what emissions are the, are coming out? I, I understood that it was all relatively clean and inert, so can you explain?
Sorry, I shouldn't have singled out rock wool together, but with the mill as well. Just being in the industrial area of town, there's a lot of, you know, being a parent and hanging out at the park there, there is a lot of dust that comes down in that area. So it would accumulate on the panels and reduce their efficiency. Same with the snowfall in the winter time, birds landing on them, that type of thing. They do need to be cleaned off periodically. And, yeah, I'm just not sure why we wouldn't wait an extra two years and get something that's so much more efficient, and you've got 95% more efficiency coming out of the graphene panels. And to just be patient for two years, I don't know, it seems like we'd get more bang for our buck. It doesn't, I just don't want to put out something just for show. Like, if it's not actually doing us any good, what are we, what are we, kind of example, are we actually spending? That we're spending money on something that isn't actually producing for us anything.
Counsel Tripp.
I guess I'm thinking if, you know, we put the infrastructure in now and we're getting help with that in terms of a grant, then when these graphene panels come to market and they can be put, put onto that place, then we've gotten the grant, we've helped pay for the core of infrastructure, basically, of the project, and then, I don't know how expensive the graphene panels would be, but certainly they would make a lot more money for us once they got installed.
Counsel Ross.
Well, if we waited for the next new technology, that's going to be better than the last technology. By the time we get the new one that we thought was better than the last one, our new one's redundant. So, you know, they're always improving. The new wind, big windmills that they use for generating power are so much more efficient than the windmills that they put up 10 years ago. The solar panels they're using right now, today, are more efficient than the ones they used even six months ago. So if we wait for two years, yeah, we're going to have a more, a, a, a better technology. But by the time we decide and we install it, it's going to be superseded. Try buying a cellphone. You know, really, like you got the iPhone 7S, and before you know it, you really need the nine. So you don't have the nine yet, but you better get in line for it. So it's, you know, it's not that we're in a hurry. This is not a new technology, people. This has been around for almost two decades, more than that, but being used, and we're actually a little slow off the mark here. So here we are talking about, we live in the sunniest valley, I heard it since I moved here, one of the sunniest valleys in British Columbia, and we're not doing much to capture the sun. This is, it's about time. Not two years from now, it's time to do it now. We have an opportunity, there's a funding program, we're not throwing money around, we're not wasting money, we're investing it in the future, and we're starting now. And as Counselor Tripp mentioned, and thank you for the information from Kevin, is the cost of upgrading or adding to the panels is actually minimal when you look at the entire cost of the project. And we can actually even look at amortizing panels, but that might be a bit expensive. Okay, so I'm, I'm still encourage counsel to vote in favor of this project.
And actually, now quickly, just to weigh in on this one also, is the fact that with Summerland, what they have done, they've set precedent on this. They actually sort of speak, become the poster child on this with technology moving. So again, being in a similar situation, again, owning our own utility, why not? Because we can get recognition possibly for grants also, so that's the object of that. Counsel, Counsel Butler and Counsel Hammond, I hope you all stick it in.
Thanks. Yeah, I would actually be more inclined to put an analogy for this, like buying a stationary bike that doesn't go anywhere. I mean, if you're going to buy a bike, you may as well buy one that actually moves. We're buying solar panels, then putting up a project for $65,000 that does not have any return on our investment. It's there for show. Why not wait two years to actually get solar panels that produce something and do something for us? I mean, you talk about buying a cellphone, you expect a cellphone to actually work for you. This isn't working for us. This is costing us money that's not going to be repaid for over 30 years. This is an investment for show. It's, it's like a child's rotary phone. It's not actually doing anything for us. And these other towns that have done it, same with New Westminster, same with Kimberly, I mean, it, Nelson, it's great, they set up these solar farms, but they're for show. They're not actually, they're, they're learning. They're learning to waste money, to spend money that's not for sure.
In their house, the solar.
If it is financially viable, absolutely. I love solar. I think it's, you're interrupting me.
Counsel, counsel, please.
Settle down.
I'm all in favor of putting up solar panels if it's going to do something for you, but as a homeowner, I'm not going to go and spend $20,000 on solar panels to, and to save $10,000. Then I'm out $10,000. Doesn't make sense. Would I do that on my own home, just to, you know, make my neighbors think that I'm cool? No. I'd get the best bang for my buck and save money, and when it becomes financially viable, absolutely, then I would invest.
Counsel Hammond, any further call to question?
Yeah, I voted for this project the last time it came to the table, and I'm going to vote for it again. I think it's a good idea that we look forward in the future and start getting on board. That doesn't mean I still don't want to see wind trees. And I'm sure that they're becoming more affordable. When they first were launched and available, they were looking at $70,000 a unit. But they're in mass production, they may be even cheaper. So I hope, we have as much wind here as we have sun, I think. We're in a wind tunnel in this valley, stand up like virtually in the day of the week.
Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counsel Butler is opposed. Motion is carried. We're moving on to questions from the public and the media. Again, please be aware, keep your own subject matter, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Kate, the Grand Bucks, that. Just to you, the staff on the SolarNow project, just trying to recall a piece of information that came up when this project was first brought forward. This money is sitting in an account somewhere, right? The city just has it in a, right?
It's just play money, it's not good for anything, so we may as well just spend it.
That's not quite what I'm saying, but I just wanted to clarify the sense of the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, the city pays into a reserve fund, the CARP reserve fund, in order to offset its carbon emissions. And so the money is in a reserve fund, similar to the other reserve funds that the city has. There's a bylaw that is set up directing how it may be spent, and in this case, this project qualifies under that bylaw.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counsel Tripp.
I don't know why we're making this flash, but.
Well, I, I think, was there any question that we had missed the deadline on this thing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In speaking with the program officer, we are still able to go ahead with it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Just a question on the FOI budget. Some of whom have a vested interest in the FOI program. Just, first, a comment, and my comment would be that I really commend the city staff for their efforts in being cooperative with the FOI program. I have never had an issue. I've always found them to be exceptionally helpful with getting the information I need. And even if I don't like the information that comes forward, if my request is denied, whatever that is, I accept their efforts. But there is something to be said for FOI requests to take an extra member of staff to put forward. And I would speak from experience when I say that when I put forward an FOI request, I sit at my desk for an hour trying to figure out, okay, is this information already available somewhere? Can I ask the staff for it? What exactly am I wording? Down to, do I want and slash or, or just and, or just or? To, to get the most concise request possible, because I know that it is staff time. And we are lucky that we have a counsel and a staff that, you know, is cooperative, but this is a valuable legislative tool, or the event that we don't have a government that is so cooperative. So then to my question, which is, I know that in past, I have asked for information that has already been FOI-ed or that may be available through some other channels. And so to counsel, or possibly to staff, whoever can answer, has there ever been any consideration given to creating an FOI database? It seems like a possible way to save some time on things that, I know the province has one, for instance. So is that something that counsel would pursue as a project, or that staff would do?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, through you. It, it's not the easiest to have a database available to everybody, because there's a lot of times, it's privacy concerns that are in there. Now, I know other arms of government have done so. For example, we see Ferris has an open website once, once one FOI has been processed to its entirety. It then gets posted on the website unless there's other restrictions of why it would not be able to be posted. That being said, other municipalities have invested largely into open data, to basically have as much data available on their websites, which is a very long-term goal for us, but it's not achievable at the moment to, to make as much data as possible available on the website without as much requirement for outsiders to request information. They would simply be able to search a database that's there in general. So that would be the ultimate dream, but we're definitely not there yet for a couple more years.
Thank you. Gentlemen, goodbye.
Les Johnson, GFTV. Yeah, I'd done a couple of questions earlier on, which would be answered by having one of these. First off, how much was spent on FOIs in the last year by the city? Do you have that number? Is that available to the public? Or do I have to file an FOI? Or in the year before? I'm just curious, is it something that has been ramping up and it's starting to really become a bottom-line thing or not? And is that information available? The next question is, is a list of FOI requests available for the media and public so we can make our own determination as to whether or not there are frivolous ones? Because I look at the agenda documentation and I see mention of one really big, big one, but then I hear you and I see in there also mention of a slew of frivolous ones. And I'm, I'm curious, because I don't think it would actually violate somebody's privacy if you didn't tell me their name, but you just said, we had an FOI and this is how it was ordered. You don't even have to necessarily tell me what the answer was, but I would like to know personally, as a media outlet as well, how many FOIs did the city base in the last year or two, and how much did that cost us? And further to Counselor Butler's comment earlier on, I'm sure you can find other ways of being cool to your neighbors besides putting up solar panels, but what ratio of the FOIs that you have faced were regarding in-camera meeting content? Like, was it 20% or 50% or 70%? Is that information available? And finally, how much of this budget asked, the 20,000, is due to that? And finally, how much of this budget asked, the 20,000, is due to that single large FOI mentioned in the agenda, duh? Like, an FOI database would help answer all these questions, because I just asked them. I don't hear any answers, probably because I kept on going on. Do you have any answers for that? How much did we spend last year?
Yours.
Your Worship, we don't know exactly the amount that was spent usually when we have FOIs. We don't have, usually typically have a lot. The last couple of years, we're very minimal, and so they are basically part of our operations, and so they're, they're part of our normal process of doing, doing business in the city. However, when you have a rather larger one that has a very broad spectrum of requests, if we have the ability to impact, and so things that we cannot charge for are our sensitivity with legal costs, redactions to, to large amounts of information. So those are two pieces of information that we cannot recoup expenses for. However, there are some expenses that we can recoup after so many hours on, on personal information requirements, it's like $75 per quarter hour. And if you have a corporation or commercial account, it's basically the cost of what it is for staff, and so it's considered we normally have a commercial account. So most of the time, we don't have a typical budget that, that deals predominantly with FOIs. However, when we see one that we just received recently, it does have a potential impact, and so that is why we have asked for that extra budget item, and this is the way in the future. It may be something that will become a budget item further on. So with that in mind, it would likely be more so where the budgeting process would show up, it would have to show how much costing was put on in four FOI requests.
Funny, as you taught, I was mentally going back in time to when I was the computer department for the tabloid newspaper in Winnipeg. And because it wasn't a real department, the newspaper had no idea how much computer operations cost them. And it, they had no idea how much each department that was served by the computer operations cost those departments. And when we finally got somebody in to be, come ahead of an actual department, the first thing you did was a budget analysis. And we found out that the company was spending an extra $90,000 a year in printouts, age trial balances and multipart forms and stuff like that. We had no idea how exorbitant the costs were for a department that everybody used but didn't technically exist. So if FOIs are becoming an increasing draw on staff resources and drag on the budget, maybe an FOI officer was a real, like, part of the budget so you can actually address how much this is costing you, and maybe make the FOI database so you can answer our questions. And other people maybe could look at the FOI database and say, oh, okay, they already answered that, I don't have to worry about hitting them with that question. Because it's obviously a big deal, bigger and bigger. Let's know how much bigger it is. That's it.
Gentlemen, please.
Good evening, Your Worship and Councilors. My name is Nigel James, and I've been a resident of Grand Forks for nearly nine years. It would be interesting, based on what was just being said, is how much of an increase in staff has the administrative staff increased while I've been living in Grand Forks? And if the computing system is so efficient and the asset management system is so efficient, one would think we would be really on top of all of this little lot right by now. My first comment, actually, after that comment, is regarding the, yes, the premium of information of $20,000 represents about $5 per resident in Grand Forks. When I was involved in Europe, in Ottawa, I had COI, FOI, sorry, FOI inquiries, and yet you got round and you did it as a desk officer, you didn't have anybody special. I wonder why the administrative staff can't cope? It, you have been mentioned that it's a, an in-camera question. It's very simple, you get an in-camera answer back, and that's the end of that. If you get a frivolous one, you've got to be a bit careful. You can't say, we consider this to be frivolous, and therefore get a frivolous response, that is not probably appropriate. But there are ways of doing these things, and quite honestly, $20,000, that's, that's outrageous, in my view. Number two was the, oh yes, urban systems. Thoughts in it, some of the people have, my friends have said that they consider urban systems beyond the payroll of, of Grand Forks. I think there's a certain amount of truth in that matter, not quite on the payroll, but there are, as you mentioned, I think by Counselor Butler, there are many other excellent engineering firms and so on who could do the same job and, and do it probably cheaper and maybe more efficiently, instead of having all your eggs in one basket, dangerous. Would you, would you invest that way as, as an investor? Point number three, and Counselor Ross, affordability. Yeah, we've got to do something about this, something to bear in mind, I suggest, I've lost my bit of paper, I'm curious. Affordability with the other, other buildings. I wonder if any council knows how much it costs to be connected to the utilities provided by the city? Per annum? Anybody like to have a guess?
Just for the basic fee for electrical, water, sewer?
Just be connected, just being connected to all the utilities.
Yes. It's on the bill, but I can't...
Oh yeah, I know. You don't look at it. When you add it up and say, over the year, it comes to $1,291.86.
What services are you getting for that?
I beg your pardon?
What are your, what services are you including?
The water, sewer, electricity, and garbage. Once you are obliged to pay, whether you like it or not.
It's a bargain, bargain.
I asked a certain other people, well, I asked someone else, and they said, oh, $2.50 or whatever. Anyway, that's, it's just something for you to think about when you come around to your budgeting. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend your budgets and so on, because I've been out of action for nine months, because of my own, my own lack of ability to stay on a bicycle.
I may just comment on that statement, so that's $100 a month, that's about $3 and something a day?
Uh, it, per month...
1,200?
Per month, it is $215.31.
Did you say 1,200?
$1,291.
Okay, so that's $1,200 plus or minus.
Yes, I said $1,200, and that made it...
That's $100 a month.
Unfortunately, when...
That's $100 a month, 100 times 12 is 12.
No, 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 sorry. $215.31 a month. Every two months, sorry, every two months. Beg your pardon, beg your pardon.
Okay, so if I divide that $100 and change into 30 days as an average, that's $3 and something a day.
Whatever. Anyway, I'm just telling you...
So a couple of cups of coffee left.
Your Worship, I'm just letting you know how much it is per annum.
Exactly.
That's all.
What service are you getting?
Now, whether you think it's fair or unfair or not, I don't know. But it's something to bear in mind, especially with the affordable housing coming on, because each of those is going to have to have that money added on the topic.
But the dialogue has already been out there, this discussion has been had, so that if the, if the citizens request lesser service, then we can lower the cost, but you will get lesser service. But in a community where you're getting the services you are, I feel that this is...
With respect, Your Honor, Your, Your Worship. How do you get lesser services for electricity? You're either on or off?
You said sewer and water.
Sewer and water, you're either on or off.
There are maintenance costs associated with that, if there's a repairs...
Yes, of course.
...who pays our unionized staff?
Yes, of course, yes, understood. But you're either connected, and, and if you've got a house in Grand Forks, basically, you've got to be connected with water, sewer, electricity, and your garbage. You have no choice in the matter. You get $1,200 per annum.
But that fee is paying for other expenses of maintenance.
Of course it is, of course.
It encompasses sidewalks, it encompasses all of them.
Okay, on that subject, for instance, the water that we are provided here costs us nothing. It comes from the ground.
The delivery's...
The cost of it is the purification of it and transporting it, that's what it costs.
Delivering it.
The delivering it. But the water costs nothing.
Yes, but we are in a, in a very elaborate system here, because we are on wells, wells.
Wells as well, yes, correct.
Which is major cost, because it's mechanical devices which break down.
Yeah, that's true. Now, I don't know...
Fortunately, my comment is because I'm in the industry, so I'm telling you that.
Well, yes, and I don't know whether actually you're allowed to have a well within Grand Forks area or not, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just stating what a residential house costs to be connected, to live here.
I will keep it in mind while we're looking at budgets. But if you can show other communities that pay less with a bigger per capita, then I will possibly entertain that possibility.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out a fact, nothing in this state.
It's a pretty...
I'm just meaning it at that.
I'll argue.
I mean, what I could do is, I suppose I could go and tent on it on, on Crown Land and sleep there for a bit until I got moved on. I ain't going to do it.
Well, you're not comparing apples with apples then.
Oh, no, no, I'm comparing Grand Forks with Grand Forks, that's all. What other people do in other communities, I don't know, and I don't really care, because I don't live there.
You have to compare, because the RCMP do it with statistics of their performances in other communities.
We're talking, I'm sorry.
On every level.
With respect, Your Worship, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about utilities. Now, point number, next point. And, and one of the things that you mentioned, I did explain the reason why I didn't know about all of this stuff was because I'd been out of action somewhat. And at least I'd learned to walk again, which is tremendous.
So you're M.I.A.?
Not now. I was. Number three, no, I've done that one. And the last one actually is, um, yes, how about this one? A really weird idea. Solar panels. Well, the south face of Observation Mountain is doing nothing, because nobody climbs up it, just put solar panels over the lot.
We weren't here for the solar, or the solar, sensitive ecosystem survey this morning. Observation Mountain is actually very sensitive.
Unfortunately, I was trying to keep my, my broken, mended hip, keeping it going in lack of fit and so on. Yeah, I should have been here, that's true, but...
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you. Good to be back, Your Worship.
Ditto.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. One more question on the FOI memo here. What specifically is it, I understand this motion, or I've inferred that it may be about an in-camera item, but this one that seems to be so onerous, what specifically is it that makes it so terrible or, or long? Is it the legal costs? Is it the redaction? Is it the number of pages? Like, can staff elaborate on that a little bit?
To where's the deal?
Oh, Your Worship, it's, it's basically the broadness of the network. Sorry. Due to the requests that are within that is, has the ability to create a lot of people who'd be there to, it's like a, I can't explain it anymore, it's a broad set of network.
In other words, the complexity of it is all of the above that you've mentioned.
Yeah, it's a lot. Thank you.
That's a lot of research. Move back into...
Do you have a...
Just an observation from all of this, if you were databasing all the FOI information, whether or not you've actually had an open taste of the world or not, then when you go to AKBLG to discuss this with other communities, or you go to UBCM to hammer at the provincial government because of things that are going on that are, in a sense, being downloaded, let's say, charges or whatever, you'd have ammunition. You'd have actual data, as opposed to anecdotally going, well, it's just tough. How tough is it? Well, we spent a lot of money last year. Well, how much did you spend? Well, we don't have that number. You'd have that number. You have numbers about FOIs, et cetera, et cetera. If you were dating that, databasing that right now, you'd have that information for yourselves, as opposed to if you really wanted to go to UBCM or AKBLG and, and put a full-court press on about the increasing cost of FOIs and frivolity of some of them and everything else, you'd have to do your own, essentially the same information scouring that an FOI requires to yourselves, to be able to satisfy your own requirements, to take that information there. That's just one observation. I live in the city, I don't pay for the sewer, I don't pay for the water, because we're not using sewer services, and I'm sure other people don't. And one final thing on solar. The first patented solar energy system was not photovoltaic, it wasn't a windmill, it was a solar thermal chimney, it was patented in Spain about 108 years ago, and yeah, we could use this valley here. But unfortunately, all the money being spent on research into solar energy harvesting is on solar photovoltaics, not on other systems that might work. But anyways, just for your...
I was just going to say to Les quickly, staff was telling us earlier that a lot of cities do have full-time people dedicated to FOI, that it's in larger cities, it's, yeah, it's a huge job. In larger cities, like, through up to three people, probably.
And the more, the more collected information you have on it, the better a picture you have in your own heads as a unit, as an organization, of how onerous it might be or not, how much it costs or not, and how much problem it is for you to service it or not. And then, then when you come to public meetings like this, or other organizations, or to the public, you actually would have real ammunition to back that up, as opposed to some people out there might be saying, ah, they're just bitching and complaining, because that's what they do, they don't want to answer the questions. And that's just an attitude issue that they, they can, their opinion then to their friends holds as much water as you guys saying what you say, because you don't have numbers to back it up. All you have is an ask for $20,000. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'd have a database of a multitude of frivolous FOIs.
Yeah, but, but the thing is, if, if, if that was what was going on, people would see that, and they would have sympathy for you.
And the people would see it, they would actually probably laugh at us and say, this is ludicrous, you actually documented this?
Oh no, you have to prove it, right?
Anyway. All right, you have a motion to adjourn, it's Counselor Ross.
It's expensive for all of you.
Counselor Crogg, all those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.